Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this October 20th Zion City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mary Kinnick?
Aye. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bremner, would you offer our speech and the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Bremner. Pastor Langley from Christ Community Church, would you lead us in prayer this evening?
Be glad to. Thank you. O'God, or Heavenly Father, we have just pledged our allegiance to this land that we love and confess that we are people under your sovereign rule. And that goes for our community as well. So it is fitting for us to acknowledge our dependence on you and to petition you on behalf of our leaders that you would grant them every virtue that they need in these strange times in which we live. Integrity and respect for one another, civility and energy. Sometimes we get weary in doing our duty. I pray that you would sustain these public servants. Government was your idea, and your word tells us that they are your servants ultimately for our good. And so I pray that you would bless them, keep them healthy and alert and wise and to work together for the common good. In your son's name I pray. Amen.
I'd also like to take a moment to offer a moment of silence for our first responders, our military, our residents and citizens all across the world as we continue to fight through this pandemic. As we move into the fall season, the numbers don't look good in terms of the cases. And we just want everyone to be safe, protect those that offer prayers for those that are protecting us and putting our lives on the line each and every day. So if we could have a moment of silence, it would be much appreciated. Item number four, do the commissioners have any agenda changes? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mary Kinnick?
Aye. Item number five, a public hearing. Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mary Kinnick?
Aye. At this time, I'm going to turn the public hearing over to our city attorney, Mr. James LaSalle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, City Council, for the motion to suspend the regular city council meeting and proceed to the public hearing. As a point of note, item five is related to items nine, A, one through eight later in the agenda. In sum, the city is utilizing its authority to transfer the property of the city to the Park District with approval by ordinance of the Park District as set forth in the local government property transfer act. It is under that authority that we are operating and divesting the property to a limited extent and under the limited extent of the Vacation Act of the Municipal Code. And as such, we are holding this hearing to allow any parties wanting to be heard to be heard with regards to this transfer. As such, I would ask Madam Clerk if there have been received any written comments with regards to the possible feeding of the properties listed below to the Park District. Madam Clerk, could you put in the record that there have been no written comments? I would also ask the people in attendance at the meeting, is there anyone here to make public comment with regard to the proposed transfer from the city to the Park District of the properties listed on the agenda? Madam Clerk, if you could put in the record that at 7:05 PM, no one commented on that I would also like to note for the record, as stated previously, the Park District assented to this through the passage of an ordinance to accept this property. I will list out the properties below. And I would also like to note that this comes with the recommendation not only of the Park District but also of our Director of Public Works, who is here for any comments or questions. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, do you have any questions of our Director of Public Works? Madam Clerk, if you could put in the record that at approximately 7:07 PM, there are no questions of the Director of Public Works relative to this vacation that he is and dedication, that he is recommending. As such, I'll draw your attention to item nine on the agenda. It's passage of ordinances which are eight in number, authorizing and approving the transfer of certain real estate from the city of Zion to the Zion Park District and authorizing and approving the vacation of portions of certain streets in the city of Zion as follows. Hillside Avenue from 17th Street to 21st Street. Eli Avenue from 21st Street to South Shiloh Street. The alley of South 17th Street and East Hillside Avenue. Logan Court east of Hillside Avenue, 19th Street east of Hillside Avenue, 21st Street east of Hillside Avenue. The alley of South 24th Street east of Edina Avenue and west of Eli Avenue and north of Shiloh Boulevard, east of Edina Avenue and east of Eli and west Eli Avenue, north of Shiloh Boulevard, east of Eli Avenue, and industrial drive finally between Illinois Route 173 and Champ Park Street. Are there any questions with regards to geographic locations of the properties being transferred over to the Park District?
Yes, we had, there was one question. Is it Elum Avenue? It's supposed to be Elum Avenue.
And where's Eli?
Eli?
Where Eli is. It shouldn't be Elum.
It's Eli. It's Eli.
It's Eli.
It's Eli. Okay.
I believe, and Director Roberts might be able to answer this for us. I believe Eli was platted for the city.
Platted, but it doesn't exist.
It's platted for the city. It doesn't actually exist as a street. It is, in fact, the bike path.
And that will be what is being transferred over to the Park District.
Transfer to Park District.
All right. Director, is that your understanding?
Yeah, both streets are unconstructed.
Okay. Feel free to change. Oh, he is here. I am presenting my witness. Director?
Both streets are unconstructed. They've never been a street. They've always been grass areas, just right of ways, used for utility easement and a biking and hiking trail. Has been that way, I believe, for 40 years, the bike and hiking trail.
Okay. So I had to ask that question as I was reading the agenda prior to. I was thinking, okay, I know there's an Elisha Avenue and an Elum Avenue, but Eli had escaped.
You have to go to the old plat to find the actual Eli Avenue.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Eden Avenue.
Yes.
Eden Avenue. Okay.
Director, would you care? Have you talked to the Park District about this?
Yes.
And they're going to accept with this? They agree to it?
Yes.
And they're going to maintain the streets?
Yes. Well, there's no street to maintain. They're maintaining the bike path that they always have, things. One of the reasons why they requested this is they were looking at going for grants to do improvements.
Are these grants that we can get or can only they get?
Only the Park District can get.
But the residents of the city will be able to use the grants proper, the property benefit with the grants?
Yes.
So this isn't the best public property or public policy interest of the city?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for answering that question and clarifying.
Come on trial.
I guess while the director's here, does anyone else have any questions?
Life.
Life. I signed that sheet 36 years ago.
Does anybody know where Eden Avenue is?
That is.
Do you know where Eden Avenue is?
I believe so.
Is that the one that goes from the train station south of 27th?
Yes.
That's it.
Yep. It basically looks like an alley right now.
Yeah.
Oh, very good.
It's grass, grass.
Let them have it.
All right. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Director Roberts.
Thank you, Director. Now, based on that, I would make two recommendations. Number one, that when the time is appropriate, we vote to consolidate items nine, A, one through nine, and then after the consolidation, assuming it's approved, we make an affirmative substantive vote to approve the then consolidated items. With that, I would ask one last time if there are any public comments, Madam Clerk, that anyone wants to make in this matter? Thank you. Let the record reflect that. And I would ask for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and resume the regular city council meeting.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mary Kinnick?
Aye. Item number six, citizen comments?
If there aren't any, please.
All right.
I hope you already get it right over there.
Okay. There aren't any city comments, citizens' comments this evening? So we go to item number seven is the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes on a special meeting held on October 6, 2020 at 5:00 PM and a regular meeting held on October 6, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mary Kinnick?
Aye.
Bills, vouchers 133140 through 133228 drawn on Huntington National Bank, total $336,443.34.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Is there a second? Any questions?
Just a couple. So the first one was a statement. There were some questions at the last meeting about me abstaining from the vote from the bills. So I just prepared something. So for a moment of additional transparency, just about those recent votes and approving the bills, it was not my intent to cause alarm with the residents and lead anyone to believe that Zion is not paying the bills. So we are liquid and paying bills on time. However, while this is true, it is also true that I've been dissatisfied with the level of information provided related to finances here in the city, and the current process and information does little to assist me in my role as commissioner, in particular over police and fire or at large, at least as I see it. I have been communicating with the administrator and to rectify the issue and hope to have a resolution real soon. Feel free to see me after the meeting if you have any specific questions, concerns or advice. And with that, related to the bills, I had a question on the total. The last page, number seven, has a total of $407,841.26. So I just want a clarification on what the total amount is for the bills.
I have to look and see if that might have been a carryover from a prior meeting.
I have a feeling that probably is just a carryover on the agenda copy.
This is the whole batch of invoices.
So we need an amended motion?
That's in period.
I'll amend the motion for the corrected amount of $407,841.26.
Second.
Just no questions, comments?
Yeah, okay. So when you say a carryover, you're saying that the amount in the agenda is incorrect because it was carried over from last council meeting and?
I believe it is a typo from the potential. But this is the total batch of the sequential checks.
Yes, okay. Other questions? Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mary Kinnick?
Aye. Item number eight, consider passing resolution as follows. Eight, A, authorizing and approving a certain policy regarding coronavirus disease 2019, COVID-19 related leave for City of Zion employees per Administrator Nable.
Thanks, Mayor and Commissioner. Trying to be a little proactive about something that may come to pass here. Under the Family First Program Response Act, there's a section under emergency paid sick leave where for quarantine-related time for people that were positive or had exposure to somebody who tested positive, that we cover 80 hours of basically paid leave during that time. However, discussing with the department heads, the question came up, as this continues on, what about employees that continue to have either second, unwork-related? If it's police are fired in the line of duty due exposure to a patient or something, that's a separate issue. But if their spouse has it or they continue to have to be quarantined a second time and extends beyond 80 hours, how are we going to handle that? Under the law, we don't have to do anything after that. That initial AD, they can use, they can either go unpaid or use a benefit time to the extent that they have it. I was kind of torn on that because there are individuals, we have a lot of new employees that don't necessarily have accumulated benefit time to cover that or just not having a bank account. Don't want them to go unpaid or make a decision of coming to work sick and expose other, their coworkers for fear of going unpaid. But I also don't want individuals to abuse that and have us continue to cover 100% of that. So what I was proposing is that the first AD we pay in accordance with the act, the second 80 hours or two-week equivalent would be a 50-50 split, where they would use, you know, they need to cover 80 hours during that time, they would use 40 hours of benefit time, we would continue to cover 40 hours of benefit time. Beyond that second two weeks, it would be 100% on them based on precautionary measures that they're taking or not taking to continue for a third time. But with the numbers going up again and this continuing to drag on, I would expect that we're probably going to have a handful of employees that might have secondary exposure, especially when kids might be at school or spouses at higher risk work. So I figured that would have a balance between abuse, potential abuse of the policy, but also continuing to protect other employees by having, encouraging employees to still continue to call and say that they have something to their exposure. So that's what I present before you tonight as a recommendation for approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Are there questions?
David, is this something, the Family First Response Act, is it mandated that municipalities adopt this?
No, I don't, I don't believe it is. Okay. Thank you. Okay, the head shaking, hi. We did this originally, I might have to say, back in March, when we talked about personnel plan, how we were going to respond, that we were ready to do the initial 80 hours that are covered and that's in accordance, that matches with what's in the legislation.
So employees have to exhaust their current sick leave time and family leave time before this act, before this new policy takes effect?
No, we cover the initial 80 hours or two-week equivalent. Then after that, they would have to basically burn benefit time if they had it to cover or go unpaid. But we would continue to require them to quarantine if they had exposure. So we required city quarantine, but required them to then use benefit time if we did not adopt this, pass that initial eight. This basically splits the difference, rather than them having 100% of the burden of a re-exposure, we're sharing that burden with the employee. Beyond that, though, then it becomes 100% on them. So it's kind of a phase out versus just a drop off.
Yeah, so instead of, why did we decide, or why did, you're presenting this, right?
Yes.
So why did you decide to provide this benefit upfront rather than use our current sick leave policy? And if that's exhausted, then this comes in for that.
Well, the current policy is the 80 hours.
Yeah.
I'm trying to be proactive before we start getting a second round of exposure so that we're not dealing with it reactively. And this was just a proposal to address that phase in rather than a drop off. It's just a nice idea.
So people have to exhaust their current sick leave before this policy takes effect?
No. They would use it concurrently. So the first 80 hours, they don't have to use anything. We cover the first 80 hours. The second 80 hours, they would exhaust, if they, if they had to use eight hours for one day, they would use four hours of benefit time and we would pay four hours of time. So they would, for that next 80 hours, it would be a 40-40 split. They'd have to use benefit time. If they don't have the benefit time, it goes unpaid at that point. But wherever time beyond that first 80 is a 50-50 split, then using benefit time. If they don't have it, my concern was that if they don't have benefit time, if they've already exhausted or hasn't approved, that they're going to show up to work sick and potentially put all of our employees at risk. So I wanted to try and prevent that. Like I said, I didn't want this to be, we get a call next week or two weeks from now that somebody has a secondary exposure, second exposure, and now I have to wait to November 3rd for, you know, whenever it happens. So I was just trying to get ahead of, ahead of it as a proposal.
Right. And as I read this, it's through the end of the year, this policy?
Yes, we're having it, we're having it lined up with, I believe, the family, the way that act is written for December 31st. We're going to be, I would be surprised if that act wasn't extended, because I don't see it, we're necessarily going to see all of a sudden end to this by the end of the year. But that's the way, that's the sunset provision on the act that may be renewed, in which case we, we either continue on with a new 80 hours or, we'd have a great match council if it doesn't happen.
And so the expenditures from this, we can get reimbursed through the CARES Act?
The CARES eligible if we have, I mean, we've already exceeded our allocation for CARES Act. So unless there's more allocation made for municipalities, we're not going to get anything more. If something did come up with the HEROES Act that was passed, that would be eligible towards expenses for reimbursement. There's nothing, there's not a pool sitting out there right now that you haven't had. But if that, there was all of a sudden a pool of funds, those would be eligible.
Okay. Thanks, David.
Sure.
And then one other question. So is it two-thirds for office employees and 50-50 for police and fire?
No, it should be 50-50 forever. We're not seeing the two-thirds yet, I'm sorry. That's, I believe that's under the FMLA language of the existing act.
Got it. Okay.
So really, really, item two, I think paragraph one recaps the existing language. So it spells out what's already written under the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act. For one and two are the language from that act. Three and four are basically our extension of that to an additional 80 hours or two weeks.
Got it. Okay. And then the leave calculation to go over a six-month period versus 12-month?
Yes.
Any reason you chose a six-month?
Just to, just to have a sunset, revisit this, because?
Okay. Got it.
I mean, we don't, we don't really have a 12-month because we're not 12 months into this for a certification.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
There's a third whereas of the resolution. Is that, is the word village meant to say city?
I shouldn't say.
Are there additional questions with a motion or second? In the amendment of, with the amendment of placing city in place of village? Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mary Kinnick?
Aye. Item number nine, consider passing, consolidate ordinance as follows. Eight, A, eight ordinances, authorizing and approving the transfer of certain real estate from the city of Zion to the Zion Park District and authorizing and approving the vacation of portions of certain streets in the city of Zion as follows. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consolidated passage of the ordinances.
Second.
Are there additional questions or comments? Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mary Kinnick?
Aye. Item number 10, discussion, authorization and approval. Item 10, A, tabulation of bids, 2021 water main replacement project per Director Roberts.
Mr. Chair, could I?
You may.
We have only so far approved the consolidated items for approval. So we only have a procedural matter that's been approved. We can go back to it, but we could also approve it at this point in time. So I think that the first motion was a procedural on the consolidated items, nine, A, one through, one through eight?
Yes.
And then substantively, we need to approve the now consolidated items.
All right.
So if I could get a motion to approve the consolidate, the now consolidated items with a second, that would be open for discussion. It would only need a majority vote for approval.
All right. So moved. Second.
Discussion. Clerk, please call and roll. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mary Kinnick?
Aye. Okay. Item 10, discussion, authorization and approval, tabulation of bids on the 2021 water main replacement project per Director Roberts, if he is here.
No, I don't mind. I got it. I got it ready. Give your questions up. So?
Per Administrator Nable.
September 29, 2020, per Director Roberts, the city held an exit opening for the 2021 water main replacement project attached by the bid results and per engineering's recommendation. Staff request and recommend awarding this project to the lowest responsible bidder for alternate three, patented construction in the amount of $898,345. Funding for this project has been budgeted from the water fund. Copies of the bid tabulations are on file in the city clerk's office and posted on the City of Zion website. Just to add a little bit to that fact, beginning this year, we implemented a water fee increase of $1.60 per thousand solely for the purposes of infrastructure use and infrastructure improvements. So that's where, why we were finally able to address much-needed infrastructure replacements. And we were able to, we went out to bid for three projects and we had to look at our projections of what was in that account and what would be in that account by the time they started work before we could award doing all three of the projects. And I have to say, we had enough, we had a good bid on all three consolidated versus individually. So this will be our first major project with votes and structure funds.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Are there questions or discussion? Clerk, please call and roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Mary Kinnick?
Aye. Item number 11, departmental commentary, our department heads aren't here this evening, most of them. The commissioners have any commentary they'd like to offer? All right. Item number 12, announcements, October 30th, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, the Trail of Treats at Shiloh Park. That's on the Park District website. And October 31st, 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM, there will be Zion trick-or-treating. Please note that on our website that we did post some guidelines from the Illinois Department of Public Health that go in hand with the trick-or-treating. As we've said at the outset with the pandemic, COVID-19, for those people that want to participate in trick-or-treating this year, just turn your lights on. And if you don't want to participate? just turn your lights on. And if you don't want to participate, turn your lights off. It's certainly up to the citizens if they decide to go trick-or-treating or not. November 3rd, seven PM, Zion City Council meeting. And item number thirteen, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming out this evening. Everybody stay safe and keep every, all of our citizens and our, for the United States and residents in your prayers as we go through this pandemic.